Pleas of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. One. I'd like to give a big applause to that. Nice agenda to work through today. Let's start by putting the minutes of the September 19th, 2017, racing meeting. I have a motion.
Sure, Lou.
Mr. Wilpersen.
Yes.
Smith, is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay, now, as noted at this point, Mr. Baker isn't here, but we know he can be signed on the shelf any time. Okay, let's go to public comments. Do we have anybody signing in this room?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, we did have a gentleman that signed in to speak to us today. Gene Colson with the American Entrepreneurial Schools Award. I already spit that out there. But he wants to discuss that. Maybe he could give us an introduction as to exactly his title and who he works with and all that as he speaks to us. As everyone knows, Mr. Colson is a faculty on our agenda, so we listen very intently and pay attention. We just can't really have a lot of dialogue, but we'll certainly be attuned to what you're going to talk about, as I've been giving a heads up on it. It's Colson. There's a person wherever you'd like to speak to.
A group of people to listen intently, that's a treat. I'm Gene Colson. I am almost a native West Virginian, been here 30 years, but I'm now the executive director of the Consortium for Entrepreneurship Education. We're a 35-year-old organization that advocates for entrepreneurship education in the schools, and we're based in Charleston. And about three years ago, the Appalachian Regional Commission gave us a grant to work with three West Virginia counties to pilot a new program. And our issue is that in the K-12 system, there are lots of entrepreneurial things you can do. There are projects, there are curricula, there are whole courses of curriculum that you can buy. There are FFA and DCA and FBLA have competitive events. There's a state business plan competition run through WVU for high school kids. There's a governor's school for entrepreneurship. But despite all of that, it's more than likely that most of the kids in Lincoln County and every other county will start at pre-K, go all the way through graduating in high school, and never learn any more about entrepreneurship than what they see on Shark Tank. That all of those things I just mentioned affect a few kids, or somebody just in one teacher's class, or just the ones that are selected, or just the ones in that club. And it's still pretty easy for almost every other student to come right on through and not be exposed. So our model is to create something for schools called America's Entrepreneurial Schools. And what that is, is that is a school that says, "We will deliver entrepreneurship education to every student in our building." And it doesn't mean every third grader is going to do a business plan, but it does mean that at the lower levels, when you talk about what a policeman and a fireman do, you talk about the gentleman owns the welding shop up the street, or the cafe down the road. It means that, as a spelling word, lots of adults have trouble spelling the word entrepreneurial. Thank goodness for spell check. But at a, I guess it's about second grade level, that's an appropriate spelling word. So make sure kids learn what the word is as they move along. What's the difference between owning the business and working for somebody else? We hope by the time they get to middle school that they start picking a career pathway, and they understand that whether they want to go into the health field, or one of the science fields, or agriculture, they always have that choice of working for themselves or for somebody else. And over their lifetime, they may do both. But that kind of affects what they choose to do in high school and on into college. So we just want them to know what an entrepreneur is, how an entrepreneur thinks, give them the opportunity at some point to look at their Lincoln County's community, or their state of West Virginia, and think, "You know, there's something here missing. Maybe there's an opportunity for me to start a business, and what's the problem out there that somebody will pay me to solve?" So we set up this model called America's Entrepreneurial Schools, and as I said, all you really have to do to become one is figure out a plan to reach every student in your building with some sort of entrepreneurial knowledge at some point during the school year. And there are lots of ways to do that, and we've talked to some of the Lincoln County principals about how that might take place. But really, it's up to the principal, or designee, to think about how are we going to reach every student? And usually, it starts with some things you're already doing that are already sort of entrepreneurial, particularly in a high school. And then, well, here's these other students we haven't reached yet. What do we do to reach them? So that was, three years ago, we got this grant, so I reached out to Mr. Midkiff and said, "I'd like Lincoln County to be a part of this." And he immediately said, "Yes," and got me in a room with four principals, and they all took it and ran with it, and that year, they all succeeded. And so they all continued this year. And this year, this year we just finished, is the second year, and all four of those schools succeeded this year as well. And now I understand that all four of them are planning to continue. And I think if you can just look at the opportunities for those students and the entrepreneurial culture of Lincoln County, if you settled into a system that every student learned a little bit about entrepreneurship every year, all the way through their career, even if five of those a year graduated and started a little small business, over five years, that's 25 new businesses in the county. And as you go on, many of them will stay small and support their own families, which is a good thing. Few of them will grow and hire a few more people. And maybe you get that one that gets fairly large and hires dozens of people. But a lot of that starts with making sure the youth in this area know what it takes to be an entrepreneur. So that's our story about America's Entrepreneurial Schools. I'm here today to recognize Lincoln County High School as, now for the second year and working into the third year, as being an America's Entrepreneurial School. And part of that is you get a banner to hang in the hallway, and if you would just help me roll it out so people can see it. This way, so people can see it. If you've been over to the high school, there's one of these already hanging for the first year. And this can hang in the hallway, or it can be hung outside where the parents can see it. But we're happy to award it. We appreciate Lincoln County, the schools that are participating, and especially the high school that has now completed their second year in the program. So, thanks very much.
Mr. Irvin, will you tie you in with a few other comments?
Well, Gene asked me to do a lot of stuff, and I made sure that that's happened, so that we did succeed with it. And then, like he said, we are a part of the county to add to where we're at right now to those coming years. And I think we have one student that's going to start her own business, that's going to be part of spending a year with this program.
You might be surprised how many students you have in a building of that size that already have that idea. If they come from an entrepreneurial family, you can just bet they would. But even if not, I did a career day at a different high school, and they had kids, you know, rotate through by the speakers, and I was one of the speakers. And this young woman had already had a patent and a prototype, and I said, "Well, tell me about your product." And she said, "Well, the patent is not completely done yet. I can't tell you about it." But we run into students all the time that have ideas, and lots of students who are already doing things that could become an entrepreneurial venture, that they're not even thinking about. We were sitting here a minute ago talking about the apple butter sale. And I said, "If I go up to the young people selling that apple butter and say, 'How much is that, and why is it that price?'" We hope they'll be able to say, "Well, the apples cost so much, and the sugar costs so much, and we got this much in profit, and that equals to our profits." And if we can ask that question and get that answer, they've done really great work. So I think this bodes well for Lincoln County schools and for the Lincoln County community. And I thank all of you for your support, especially Mr. Midkiff. He's home right in. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colson.
Good job.
Appreciate the award, and congratulate the pastor on another honor. Thank you very much.
I was just telling him that a few hundred students or so that participate in Lincoln County were the first, that by the first of this, of 18, we will have almost 20,000 students, and you all were among the first. So that's a really great thing for me.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have Kevin Pritchard, who wants to talk just about the energy management update. Mr. Pritchard, we can talk back for a few.
Okay. You love.
Colson, I'll probably decide what I want to do with my program.
Hello, great audience. I think I'll remember plenty of them.
I just wanted to come today and give you a little update on our energy program, kind of post Joe Parsons. Joe had started this basically as the first guy there on the board, and had done a really good job with it over the years, had a lot of good things set in place, had a lot of arguments and fights along the way trying to get things in place, but made it a lot easier for Jerry and I. Again, Jerry is in class today. He was in here with me and talked about, he told me that it was okay if I went ahead and spoke with him. But it has been, of course, a transition year for one, going from a full-time person to two part-time people. But I like to think that it has, you know, been a successful year. We've earned a lot, both he and I, working with Mr. Gosney. And as this program evolved into this two part-time areas, and Jerry and I have kind of worked out our responsibilities within the program that it, you know, I think were there, we're starting into the second year, and I think we could, we want to get better from there. But just to give you a real briefly, responsibility-wise from Jerry and I, so that you understand that, basically, my responsibilities start each morning about 6:30. I actually log into our electronic system and monitor those buildings that are, that we're capable of doing it with. We still have a few that we're not totally online with. I know Mr. Gosney's been looking into that. But basically, that is to get that first clue if we're having an issue with one of our buildings. Then I immediately email those to Mr. Gosney, so that when he gets with his guys, that he can go ahead and dispatch them out. Mr. Midkiff also, in case there is those situations where we might have to delay a school or something, if we're having probably more of a heating or electric, you know, those types of issues that we put into. Another along the lines that, with my responsibilities, I actually enter all of the utility bills each month into our database. For tracking purposes, also, it allows me to kind of get a heads-up if we're extreme in some areas. Water bills especially, it's one of the, we'll flag real quick, which may indicate we have a leak somewhere. Those are some of the things we look for, so we put those in, as well as continuing that process, doing, just keeping track of those as you go through. And kind of lastly, the part, do some walkthroughs also. I mainly concentrate with Duval and Midway and do any scheduling if I need to be there. Jerry on the other side of that takes care of the walkthroughs at all the other buildings, and as well as the scheduling for those buildings also. So we've, we've kind of come to that medium, based on when these jobs were, broke them up anyway, I think, with Mr. Midkiff, Mr. Lampel, and Mr. Gosney, as they work through those. And actually, it's worked out real well with the division, the way it's worked out to be there. Probably one of the things, you know, we're not able to get out during the day many times because of our other jobs, other responsibilities. That's probably been one of the differences between when Mr. Parsons was here and now because of our daily responsibilities. And we still get a call from time to time from a school, and we try to get those on Mr. Gosney, or whoever might need to see those during the day. During the walkthroughs, look for a lot of things, basically the energy consumption piece. Anything there that we can look for that, you know, is consuming energy, that in the end, we're going to have to pay for, and if we can bring that back, especially weekends, long breaks, holiday weekends, any of those where we can actually save a nickel or two on that. Or avoid, I said "save," and that's probably a good point to look at that. We're at the point now with our program, it's probably not so much as savings as it is avoidance of those things, based on if the program was not here versus if it is. Because a lot of those, you know, with some of the things that Joe had started within the program, and the synergistic program itself, a lot of those things have already been cut back as far as, as we can cut those back and still be able to maintain the comfort level that we need in our buildings. But you still have to monitor those to make sure that, you know, it is still being followed through, things were shut down when they can be, turned off on when they need to be, and those types of issues. So we're looking more at an avoidance part of it than the actual savings per se, unless it is such as a water leak or things of that nature, then we can cut off, it will save us in the long run. During this past summer, also, we did some walkthroughs in our buildings, you know, basically, most of the buildings shut down during the course of the summer, but we did walkthroughs there too, to kind of help to avoid again other issues, you know. And I'm just, here in the past week, one of our neighboring counties has had some major issues in their buildings. And during the summer, that is some of the things we tried to head off, to make sure that that wasn't going to happen. Because you know, as you shut a building down for the summer, and guys have been in those buildings, sometimes you're not out in any of those classrooms all summer long. Things can happen just for the short amount of time, especially with the high humidity and different things. So we tried some things with, again, with Mr. Gosney's kind of direction. He's kind of the go-to as far as our heating and air conditioning, understands it, so Jerry and I have kind of followed his direction, and come up with, actually, we attended our national conference last, in January, and I'd like to thank you for allowing us to do that, because it was really beneficial. Learned a lot, come back, I thought I was an energy guy when I come back. But there's a lot to it, there's a lot to it that I know a lot of you have had, but I did learn a lot. We shared some things with Greg, and a couple of things we tried over this past summer, and I think were, for the most part, were successful. We didn't have a lot of issues as schools started back out. So those are some of, also, as we go through, looking not only just from the energy, the moisture, any types of safety concerns that we might see. We always bring those back, either report it to the principal, bring it back to Mr. Gosney. And as, again, just another set of eyes. I know myself, being a building level principal, and some of you all have too, many times as you walk those halls every day, there's things that you see every day, but that you've looked at them so much that it's just normal. When someone else can walk through and look at it, say, "Oh, that's not, you know, not a good situation for me to take a look at." So just providing that extra set of eyes, I think sometimes is a big help too. Basically, that really kind of summarizes where we're at at this point with what we're doing, where we've been, and, you know, I think we've got a, we still have our agreement with Synergistic, which is a company, a consulting company that we go with. Right now, that part of it doesn't cost us anything. They provide that to us free of charge. Don't quite understand how that happened, but because we were some of the original that got on board, that they still provide those services to us. So the only really cost we have on that end of it, we do have to update the software usually yearly, but that part of it's handled through another company. Somebody decided to be an entrepreneur and started to run that business. With that, any questions that I can help you with, or entertain, or?
You mentioned that company there. Now, isn't that the one that we, on occasion, have to shut down, so to speak, since they began? How does that work?
Okay, yeah, good question. That's actually another company.
All of that new?
But it's, it's an agreement we have, actually Core Energy is, is the company that we contracted through, and again, that's something that Joe had set up in the past. And as I understand that, and we just went through one, actually, a couple weeks ago, like on the 13th of September, we shut down four of our buildings during that, Duval, Lincoln County High School, West Hamlet, and Hartz. Try to shut it down as totally, as much as we can. Can't get it totally shut off, but the major areas. And as I understand, if they measure what energy is not being used during that time, over, there may be several counties that are all doing it at the same time, in the necessity that they would need that at some point in time, they want to know how much they could pull off the grid to be able to send somewhere else. I don't know all the specs on that, but, but for that, that's a service that, you know, we have made that agreement with them, and they actually, you know, provide that, pay us to be a part of that, to participate in this program. And again, that's, that's been really interesting. We've been through a few of those shutdowns. Usually do one in the fall, winter, and spring, so I guess they can kind of gauge again as to at a specific time, specific time of year, what can we shut down and be able to pull that energy somewhere else, that makes sense.
I'm just curious if we still participate?
Yes, we do.
Well, if they needed that energy, play 15 minutes from now, we cooperate with it.
Correct. That's all part of the agreement, Curry, that, that they know that because we are participating in that program, should some catastrophe happen, that they need that somewhere else, they could pull us off, they could call us, "All right, we need you shut down, we need that energy and that electricity somewhere else." Which is kind of amazing to me too.
You know, we need to call, it happened one time, it was in the summer.
Yes.
It was real hot somewhere else. Yeah, we were asked to.
Yeah, it was shut down. Sometimes when they have those blackouts, brownouts in some of these areas where the temperature is.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean the whole pepper schools that we're, might have been.
Could be, yes. Because I'm sure that they, we see that from time to time, they'll send us, once we go through one, they'll send us a little report as to potential savings by shutting it down. So I know that they would have someone making those calculations to say, "Okay, we need this, and this, and this, and that will give us enough to send it somewhere else."
All right, I don't want to hear anything else. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard, appreciate the update. Next, we have Rod Cummins, who wants to give us a transportation update, will be updated all day long.
Dave, good afternoon. I wanted to give you a brief update about our gasoline pilot program. As you know, we're moving forward with that, but the pilot, unfortunately, program has the data been moved back on us until after the state has respect meetings. So they backed everything up on us. It appears that sometime in March, that the pilot program will be allowed to continue, and I'll keep you updated as far as when we have a definitive date on that. But I did want to revisit too, and let you know that we believe that this pilot program is going to be beneficial to us in the overall reduction of costs for a fleet. Just to give you, I've got several, but I'll give you a few examples of the savings that we'll have with the gasoline versus the diesel. To begin with is the cost. The cost of a gasoline bus is about $7,000 cheaper than its counterpart with the diesel. If we were to have engine problems and have to replace an engine, on a gasoline engine, a new engine will cost us about $10,000. A rebuilt diesel is about $17,000, and a brand-new diesel, it's about $24,000. So that's quite a big difference in money right there. A lot of the issues that we have is with pollution control stuff on a diesel bus versus a gasoline bus, so those, those could be resolved. ETR cooler on a diesel is about $2,000, there's not one on a gas. Turbo is about $3,000 on a diesel, there's not one on a gas. DOC and the DPF, which is the catalytic converter that has your stuff in, is about $5,000 that we would eliminate. Things like filters, on a diesel for a gas filter, on a diesel filter, it's about $40, $10 on a gasoline. An air filter for a diesel bus is about $120. It's about $30 on a gasoline bus. So we think, you know, that obviously with parts, that that's going to save us money. Some of the issues from gas engines, from way back when we had them before, if there's not a carburetor, or carburetor on it, now a lot of the issues before were carbureted, and these are fuel-injected. Warranty-wise, a lot of Bluebird, it's five years and unlimited miles. On an international bus, it's five years and 100,000 miles, you know. So obviously, we're.
I mean, Mr. Baker had asked that one day, as to the warranty on the gasoline.
Yeah, it's five, five years unlimited miles on Bluebird. Now, the international bus is five years and 100,000 miles, and that's on the engine and powertrain. That's, that's pretty much it, I guess, unless you have some questions about that part of it.
It's a transition. Completely change a fleet, how many years you think you could talk?
Long. Long. You know, right now, until we finish with the, I'm not sure, the lease, I think we've got two more years.
Three and a half.
Three, three and a half more years. So we've obligated 222,000 of that. We hold that back because I think it's proven for us to not buy a bus, so that if something happens, that the state doesn't give us money, then we can make our payment. But even with that, over the last couple of years, we have enough money right now for two buses. The state will give us more next year, so maybe another bus next year. So over the next couple of years, you're looking at two, one or two buses every two years. And then after that, you know, after the lease payment's paid off, we'll jump it up. We're still talking about no more than three buses a year. So it'll take a while. And not to mention that if we, when or if we completely convert back to gasoline, you know, then we're going to have to do the gas tanks at Hartz, and then combine with, and Duval too. You know, so it'll be a long process, and I don't think it'll be anything happening soon. But I think it's worth us looking at, and that's one of the objectives of the pilot program, is that we'll be able to compare our costs with gasoline versus diesel, and go forward from there and see if it's something we need to do.
You're on, Curry. You know, you may have some alternative tools come into play in a few years.
Yeah.
You'd want to.
Yeah.
And even driverless buses.
Yeah.
Be a bus driver.
Let's not go there.
You have to still.
No, that's something, y'all can worry about that one. The other thing that I left it out, there's no more questions about the diesel, anyway. I laid out any of them. I'm curious what number one of these. The state has a new requirement for each sport, that they have to have an emergency plan. We kind of come in on the end of this because, you know, we were told what they had told us, that I know, we have received any correspondence from the state stating what exactly we have to do. But with our principals in our meeting, they were given these forms for each sport that they have, which includes bands, includes cheerleaders, and whatever activities that we have. A form like this has to be filled out. A form like this has to be filled out, which shows who is supposed to call 911 in the case of an emergency, who does CPR, what to do, who, who contact people are for heat strokes, and those different kinds of things, so that we have a plan in place. A copy of that plan has to be on site. A copy of that plan could be in the press box at the football fields, or it could be in a locker room at the basketball facilities, and we have to keep a copy here. So currently, what we're going through the process with, and this is one from the high school, but they're emailing, we're sending those to me, we're compiling their list so that we have them here at the school. I'll share those with Mr. Wimble, so that he and I both will have a copy in case of an emergency, so that we've got that documented. But this is a new requirement, we just wanted to get you up to speed on that.
We didn't talk to the principals last week, the principals made it, and everybody's good. What I didn't know, I think it was, I didn't share it with the group, is there, this has to be done twice a year, so it's, they do it in fall, and then they turn around and do it again for spring.
Yeah, and, and for every sport that we have, which includes band, cheerleading.
Appears these do seem like it.
Yeah, it does. Any questions? Thing else?
Anything else you want to discuss today, Ron?
Not really.
Ron, one question. Has a traffic, change of traffic, traffic pattern out, who helped the buck?
I, I haven't had any complaints since we've done that, and yes, I believe I have. Matt's already left, we can check with Matt, too, but I haven't been receiving complaints like we're going to have. Thanks, Ron. Thanks.
Okay, enough to be outdone. Ray Ellis, finance update.
Disappointed with Kevin, because he was supposed to stutter him all around and be longer. He didn't do it.
No, disappoint us.
But it's 1:30, I got this balanced about 5 till 12, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to get everything well. You saw all of it, I come in, I'm doing my balance dance. And it's my happy dance.
Last year, you've been 5 to 1.
I was closer than that, I think. I was changing. Well, here's, here's the issue. I don't have to have these completely done until Thursday night. I think it's when I told you I'd have these done. These are the basic financial statements that I'm giving you, and the top is the fund balance. I had some issues with, I was off on my net position, I think it was a million and five last night, and about 9:30, I think I got it down to 350,000, and because I misread a number, I got it down to $7,600 difference. And then that was the auditor's error, I figured that out, so now I'm balanced. Anybody else want to talk through this? I don't blame you one bit. Okay, the top sheet is what I think you all want to know, but again, I don't have to have everything done. The only thing I have left to do are to fill in blanks on the rest of the templates and do my notes, and the notes on the MDNA analysis, so these numbers are not going to change. This is in, everything else is filled in the blank, I send it to the state, I send it to Sean, and we should be good to go. I can go back over this if you want next, you know, the next board meeting. I don't think you're going to want to, but I can.
Now, are you required to, we wouldn't want you to do that, but are you required to send them to the media?
By the evening of the 28th. So we'd already worked that out, what, two weeks ago, I think? He's trying to plan for his advertising.
Are those early in publishing?
Next week, yeah, yeah.
And hopefully I have done it by the time this ends. I'll probably be here late the next two months, so. First off, the net change in the fund balance doubled from last year, which is always a good thing. I think our fund balance at the end of last year was $477,000. The change was $499,000 to the good, so that more than doubled it. So the ending fund balance for Fund 11, which is what we look at, Fund 61, we don't care about, because it's all the federal programs, the state programs, money we really can't control on how we receive it and how we spend it, is stipulated to be spent a certain way. But Fund 11, our ending fund balance is $977,000, and that's highlighted in yellow, about one-third of the way down in the middle of the page. We take that amount, and we add back our OPEV expense, because as I explained, when we talked about the budget, that, that's not real money, it's like monopoly money to us. We, we add that back because we really didn't spend that, the state gave us money for that. So that leaves us with $3.8 million. And then we have to take away everything that we had encumbered in things like the levy that we know we had to spend a certain way. And our ending fund balance after designated and committed items is like 2.659 million. Now, when your fund balance doubles and everything, that looks really good, and I'd had a couple of conversations with Mr. McKiff, I was thinking it was going to be about, about that, somewhere where we were at last year. It doubled, but due to the fact, in, in the spring, if you remember, we had several conversations about the excess levy, and we knew we were going to be down, and we had to use a lot more money to balance the budget. Last year, we used $600,000. This year, I used almost 1.2 million, and I had to talk the state into allowing me to do that. I told them, I think that we're going to be, you know, good with our number, and we were. So even though it's $2.6 million, we have to take nearly a million, two of that, and stick it in the budget that's already used, because we had to balance our Fund 11 for this year, for fiscal year 18. So that dip in what we expect to collect really, really took its toll on, you know, what, what we could do. I had to use $449,000 of last year's money to take care of items that were going to be, we were going to have overages in, and you got to do that for the audit, and you have to, you know, make sure you clear all those funds, whether it means zero or, or above, you can't overspend anything. So that hurt us, and that mostly came from, you know, where we hired teachers. I was trying to hold on to that, and I used it in June just to cover where we were at, instead of moving it around during the course of the year. I just found out at the end of the year where, where that money was really needed, and we covered those areas. So we knew, we had, that's why we did what we did in personnel season, because we riffed those positions that we had added for the most part, and, you know, it helped us out. But we'd already spent that money during the course of the year. So the amount in that, trying to think of the name of it, it's a contingency account. When all's said and done, I do my journal entries, will be $1.487 million, which, again, we talked about the levy call, you know, the excess levy, we're expecting it to actually be below the levy call this year, and I think that that's going to happen.
About $300,000.
Well, we've already gotten in, I'll start giving you updates again every month, but compared to last year, we know last year was down from the year before. The two sets of checks that we got in were close to around $350,000 less than what we'd gotten last year. So that, that, that could be a sign of, of things getting really bad, as far as those tax collections. I wasn't expecting to see that this early. I know that coal's taken off, but still, I think those taxes are based on incomes and property values from the year before, am I correct? So I think that last year, we were worried about it, this year, it's going to happen. My personal opinion, based on what I've seen, and again, I'll start giving you updates. So this money that we're putting into that contingency account, we're going to have to hold on to it, because I think we're going to have to dip into it a lot more than $449,000. That's just an educated guess, based on what I've seen, and based on what we experienced last year.
Okay, you're saying $499,000.
That's what the change in the fund balance was. In other words, that was the revenues over the expenses for Fund 11. We did really well in managing our money. Everybody watches, you know, all these departments, everybody knows their budgets, they watch their accounts, people that have, you know, but again, we, we had more than what the original levy call was. We received more money than what that levy call was, not as much as, as 2016, but we received more than what the, the original levy call. So that helps, whenever you can get more of that tax money, and that helps, because that all goes straight into Fund 11. Everybody's watched their money, but, you know, we, we were, I mean, $500,000 over our expenses, that, that was really good.
But like you, a couple years later, too, you're, several years ago, we were actually collecting in excess of what the levy called for.
Last year, I think we collected somewhere in the area on the excess levy, which that caused $3,561,000. I think we collected $3,700,000. The year before was $3,900,000. I think we'll be below that this year, and it's exactly what the excess rate thinks. When we had that conversation, based off of what happened last year and the conversations we had, I kind of thought that maybe they were underestimating what we were getting. I just, I don't think that's going to be the case now. So I, I suggest that we be very conservative in everything that we do, and everything that, that we can control. It's actually $380,000 less on the, on those tax checks. They totaled, I think one totaled, last year was about $2.2 million, and we're to like $2.81 million, something like that, or $1.81 million. So, but the good thing is, on the positive side of all this, we, we have cash, we don't have a cash problem. So with that said, that can go really quick, because that cash is Fund 61 and Fund 11, and I saw last year it dropped to around $2 million one time, and I got really worried that you have to fund a couple of payrolls, you know, in advance. But I don't know if that'll, that will happen again if the tax revenue keeps dropping, if we just don't get enough. So, but right now, we do have an excess right now of $5 million, close of the year is $4.7 million. But it just depends on what those collections are like. We know what we're going to get with state aid, so we don't have to worry about that. I haven't started telling me what we're going to get, when we're going to get it, so I can always count on that, but those tax collections now, I don't want to be really worried.
You never know with the state tax collection, you might see a cut.
Yeah, that, that's another thing. We may have another 1% cut. We just, we don't know. I'm, I'm hopeful that that won't happen, but if that happens, then what was it, 1/2% or was it 1% last year, it's $153,000, I think I had to cut. I just took it straight out of teacher salaries, I just cut that budget, so.
Your advice is to be conservative.
That, the, the tax collections really worries me. I mean, it's, it's nice to have this, and we had the money from last year up till the end, and if I move that money early on, it's just a guesstimate on what we're really going to need to cover certain things, but if you wait till the end, and you, there's a couple of reports I can run, and I can see where we're in the hole, and you just fill that in, and it took $449,000. So who knows what this, this holds. We, the tax collections may go up. You know, we see the trains going up and down the rails now, which is always a good thing, but I'm thinking that may affect next year and not this year. That's, and again, from what I understand of the process, that's the way I understand it, probably, with it. I think I gave you a balance sheet probably on the very back, and it's just got the cash listed, it's a bunch of information that, you know, the balance sheet is a living, breathing document. Every year, it just keeps changing, it grows or it decreases, it's taking, it's why it's so important, that's, when, when you all have allowed me to have Birdie in, and we give her those days, what she has done for me is to help me get the balance sheet straight, because once that balance sheet is straight, entering the information in the financial statements is just a matter of making sure everything's balanced, which obviously, two hours ago, it wasn't perfect. That, that's a huge help, because there's all kinds of tricks and things that she knows that I still don't know, and I probably won't know for another few more years. So she helped me get the balance sheet straight, and then we, you know, she worked some on the financial statements, and like I said, I still got another two full days to work on these. But that's a living, breathing document, and it'll show your financial position as you look at it over the course of the year, and you look at it year to year. The other information that's stapled together, these are more, there's, there's one balance sheet statement in there, so I had to enter it into the template, but these are like financial statements. If this was a company, at the end of the year, whatever you had in income, you put retained earnings, or, or you give it out, dividends, and give it out to the owners, and then it starts anew every year. But that balance sheet goes up or down every year, depending on your financial position. So if we keep having a half a million dollar increase in our fund balance, that balance sheet's going to look better and better and better every year. With that said, there's a whole lot of information on there that you all want to hear about, so I'm not going to go over. Other than the cash, if you look on the second page of that balance sheet, you'll see the fund equity, total fund equity, $977,000. That's last year's ending fund balance, and the revenue and expenses, the revenue over expenses this year, so that's how that fund balance grows, you take last year's ending fund balance, and then you look at your revenue and expenses in that fund, Fund 11, and if your revenues are over, your funding, your funds will increase. So I watched that all year long, and I thought, I think, I think we're going to be okay, because the year that I started, the financial statements that were done the year before, I think the fund balance was $17,900 and some dollars. That was your revenues over your expenses, and now we're, you know, nearing almost at a half a million dollars, so we, we've done well, it's nothing really that I've done, everybody's watched their money. We haven't had to say no too much to people. It happens, but you got to give your staff a lot of credit on that. I don't know, maybe before I was here, they said no so much, and nobody comes now and asks. I have no problem saying no, I just haven't had to do it, so.
Mr. McKiff has got to.
Well, I don't think I've told Jim, though. I've told him I advise against it, that you do what you want.
That's a good answer.
Your name's on my paycheck. I give Mr. McKiff advice, that's.
That's right.
So with that, if you've got any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them if I can.
If I had any other take, I don't, I think you seem to be, have a good field for it, you're right. You know, we talked about tax collections last year, and I think, you know, we want to continue monitoring those, and why it's not.
Well, definitely, I've learned a lot more this year than what I even did last year. On the front end, again, like I said, the balance sheet practice is a big thing, once you get in. I didn't understand why in the first year I was here, Birdie was, she was working a lot, and I kept saying, "Birdie, we got to start entering information, Will, we got three weeks for this to be done," and she said, "We can calm down." And we were still working on the balance sheet, but we didn't face nothing different. I loved it. They worked out, too. Whenever I finally started entering data, I was like, "Oh, now I know why you had me wait, because it balances, it's wonderful."
Got to work that template.
Yeah, and, and the State Department, what Sam Pauley has done with that template, you know, you've heard about Gatsby 68, well, he separated Gatsby 68 and everything to do with it on another set of templates. And I told you, my net position was off till two hours ago. I went last night, and I knew I had to do Gatsby 68 last night, and it was already 5 o'clock, and I'm like, "Lord, I'm in trouble, I'm not going to get home really late." And the way he had that set up, and, and it'll be really easy next year, because now I've already, I set up the reports I needed last night. He did such a good job, and, and it solved my problem pretty much with my net position. Him and Amy have done, you know, every time I've asked them, they've, they've been real helpful. I went to new treasurer training a year after I started, just because I couldn't go last year, because I was trying to balance the financial statements. But I went this year, and they, they, you know, there's a lot of new treasures, and they're really trying to help them. Every time I call them, I probably bug Amy a lot, as, as you know, well, maybe you don't know, we have some problems with some reporting systems that we have for retirement, and Trina is. and Trina is, has really struggled with this. So I called Amy Willard at the State Department one day and I said, listen, I said, Trina's really discouraged. Said she's, and it was, we were in the beginning of September, said she's only got one payroll uploaded, one report off one payroll. And Amy said, well, congratulations, she has one more than anybody else in the state. And so with that and every time that Trina would tell me problems, I would relay those to Amy. I wasn't always telling Trina I was doing that, but I did. So one day Amy calls me, she said, hey, what's Trina's number? I got a guy here, a programmer, who can help her. And they sat on the phone for a few hours and just, I could see a smile on her face again and they set up a conference call for yesterday and with the retirement board and the retirement board was walking through. There's people that have quit and insurance and payroll just walked out the door in other counties and said, I'm retiring, I quit. Mingo and Mason, they're in a mess because these people are so upset. They've tried to implement this system before it was ready. And Trina's called me, she said, well, once they walk me through what, exactly what you have to do and the work around you have to do, she says, this is going to work really well. But right now we're still in a mess. She's still working maybe on the second payroll in July since, you know, yesterday she got everything for the first one. Or maybe she's got all July and she's working on August. And the whole state's having a problem with this, but Amy stepped up and got her hooked up with the right people, the State Department, and then with the retirement board to help her out because we've been sending our money up there that we owed them and so they, they sent a check back one time. I was like, well, that's crazy. They're going to go broke because if they send everybody's check back because they can't upload the system that don't work, they're not going to have money to send. So we're reaching for this. But I think it'll be a slow process and we may be one of the first counties that actually get ours done because of what they were able to do for us at the State Department.
Thanks to everybody working together, doesn't it?
Yeah, we just have to talk to people sometimes, people don't talk to you.
Anybody have any, somebody else with Mr. Evans? Thank you, Ray, I appreciate it. Okay. All of our estates, everything's on the agenda. We'll go to the administrative section. Do you have a motion to that place? Mr. McKibb.
We have heard from you, yeah.
It's my turn.
We knew your time was coming.
Item A is an interagency agreement with Southwestern Community Action Council Incorporated to provide special education services to young children for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached. Item B is an agreement for the use of the home property at Lincoln County High School by Lee Priest, Jr., effective nine twenty seventeen according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached. Item C is a purchase service contract with Southwestern Community Action Council Incorporated with the provision of four teacher assistants, co-educators, and one preschool specialist in designated schools for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year according to the terms of the contract, which is attached. Item D designation of the following employees to provide specialized healthcare for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Item E is the adoption of a job description and approval post, a position for parent and family engagement facilitator effective immediately. And job description is, is attached. Item F, out of state travel for the following personnel. Item G, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus check rooms for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings and have completed volunteer orientation.
And that's, okay. Anybody have any questions regarding administrative? Okay, if not, is that an all yes vote on those? All yes? Let's go to the finance section. Colonel made a motion.
Schedule of invoices totaling three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. That schedule's attached. If you've got any questions, just let me know. We have voicemail now, so you can call and leave a message.
Can I actually go and leave a message or is it?
We can actually leave a message if you call the right number, so.
And caller ID.
Would you want to tell them?
I use those a lot. I can't see the hand detail.
Yeah, we got caller ID there.
Which may have something to do with leaving a voicemail.
What might be on that voicemail? Okay. Anything else if it's not from Mr. Evans? Is that an all yes vote on the two finance items?
Yes.
All yes, okay. We've got a personnel, that means motion. Move.
Say it.
Red and Larry. Mr. Langle.
Okay, item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment professional personnel. Item C, employment of extracurricular athletic personnel. And item D, retirement and resignations. And the handout I give is, hasn't changed much since last year. So job description, letter of invitation coming down tomorrow.
Okay, if I have any questions or comments about the personnel issue. Okay, if not, is that an all yes vote? All yes. All yes on that one, so. We're down to some of his concerns.
McKibb has a report, he's reported anything. I just have one thing, they should commend the land for their performance Saturday. I understand they were grand champion, capital metal. I agree that I, Facebook had all kinds of different awards, programs, groups. Once again, we like when they do well for them and for us.
Okay, Mr. McKibb.
I'm ready. I'm happy to report that as we sit here today, the football field track's been hydrocated. We are excited to see the completion of this project. I know Mr. Gosdys is working really hard overseeing the successful completion of this project. I think we have another meeting coming up Thursday with the contractor. We'll hopefully get him to kind of wrap this thing up. Fitz's van's ready to go, right? Fitz's company is on the ready. I didn't get to ask you earlier, Greg, as soon as the grass, the hydrocating takes place, will he be ready to move in immediately? Right. Fitz, that area, all.
Is he able to work even though the grass hasn't?
Yeah, ground, you take, see, all is going to be on the outside. Four feet away from actual, the actual outside lane on the track will be the, I call it, your fence liners.
Okay, kind of related question. Is it still your plan to have some type of other temporary blockade fence?
I think it would be wise if we have to even if we just go with the plastic fence. Again, we'll put every ten foot, but just post up with how that do. I think it'd be wise to keep it like all from that area.
Yeah, because even though they won't be able to get inside the fenced in area, they can still get to the other end.
There's really no point of being there because all that's gone out, it rattles all along. All you're going to do is be getting somebody in there to make another.
I'm thinking even if I could further beyond the field and all down towards the pond, for instance, you know, if you want to.
We'll take it all the way from that point, all the way to the other point.
Just kind of some type of construction type fence or something.
Mr. Reese?
Yes, sir.
We're having ninety-degree temperatures right now.
Yes, sir.
Ground temperature, which a lot of people haven't considered, the ground temperature has to be extremely average. And if someone doesn't monitor that hydrocated area, the water, the moisture and the mulch will take, it'll be gone in no time at all. And we're not supposed to have any reduction in temperature from a problem Thursday or Friday. And even with that, we aren't having any rain, so somebody needs to monitor that extremely.
There is a possibility Wednesday highs and we're going to keep.
Possibility.
Okay, so what is the solution to that? I mean, is the obvious, did you spray water on it or?
You don't have to water.
That's what we discussed, right? He said, we don't have to, not water, have to stop there, the water, the football field track area. Does that require a lot of water?
You just have to keep it damp. Doesn't have, you don't want to soak it, you don't want to, and what you're not considering here, yes, we have the ninety-degree overhead temp, you know, surface temperature, but you're going to have a lot of radiation, heat from the ground because you've had ninety-degree temperatures for, what, two or three weeks? So that's going to be coming up through.
Of course, the cool nights have some.
Very little on the ground temperature.
I just noticed in the morning, around my place, everything is damp.
Sure.
Been on the rhythm and it'll have some. Mr. Gosdys on the monitor. Where you going to announce when the first season grass sprouting?
Well, actually, they germinated, they've been germinating since last week.
Oh, the C?
So it has germinated where we should see grass.
If you see his vehicle, just continue to circle.
Because I have, we've all made multiple trips around the high school.
Oh, yeah, I'm there early mornings, late evenings. I'll see a little sprinkle, it's kind of like the ball guy gets a little bit of that.
Okay, sounds great.
Our needs project, the application is due October the second. We've been working away, chipping away and getting everything together. We've had a couple of conversations about this previously. Our plan was to submit a needs project that would replace the roofs on all our buildings except for Lincoln County High School and Harts PKA. However, we've had a change and I think it was yesterday we got a quote on the roof replacement at West Hamel Elementary School that came in much higher than what we anticipated. Now, keep in mind, West Hamel is the lowest on the priority list. That roof's actually in pretty good shape, we just want, just to include it in our submission. However, when we got the quote and it was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think was the estimate, we realized that's just a little too steep to submit with the other roofing projects. So we, we've discussed this, we've been working with Dave Ferguson, Ray, Greg and I, the guys at ZMM or at the SBA through this process. We're all on the same page here that we'll leave West Hamel out of this submission and come back to West Hamel Elementary this time next year and include that as a, as a project. Because our commitment, as you just heard, Ray, talked about our financial situation, how we had to get stewards of our money and issues. We'd hate to make too large a financial commitment to this project. It hurts. When emergencies, things come up that maybe we know we hadn't thought it was going to take place. Also, we want to submit a needs project in the spring to support the Blue Ball PKA settlement issue of the building that are near the cafeteria side that's going to have to be addressed. And we're not sure right now what our commitment's going to be with that project on the tail. Or the likely, the board's going to have to kick in several thousand dollars for that project, so. So that's our plan then. On October second, we'll make the submission and this November thirteenth to fourteenth, I think, our presentations superintendent presented plans to the reporting members and then we'll find out mid-December whether or not we're successful with our submission.
Well, these prices that you got on the roof, are they still valid or since we had the hurricane, have you had the great price of everything?
That's one of the things, you just don't know, you just don't know. The pricing right now is good, but I've found supplies and demand and all that. There could be a change by the end by October, by December, prices may have gone up, so.
Ray, just help me guys, make sure I'm right. We're looking at a project submission that's going to be, we'll be asking around one point five million dollars, one point five, one point six in that ballpark. And then the board would be kicking in around two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I think the estimate from, from Lenny Barker, who did that work, who's going around for the SBA looking at these roofs, was like one point, under one point two. And it was actually the guys from the SBA that suggested asking for more than that, just in case that that happens. So I haven't talked to Ferguson to ask him exactly if he's going by those numbers or if he's increasing that. I didn't think to ask him that the other day when I talked to him. But that, that was the thought of the SBA's mind, I'm sure, whenever they said that. It's just a safety net.
We've involved them in every, every step along the way because we want to make sure that we're jumping through all the hoops, we're doing everything correctly and that we have everyone's backing and support with our submission. Fingers are crossed that, that we're going to be successful in our attempt to get this funded for those roofs. And who wasn't, oh, Dave Ferguson was telling me yesterday, I talked to him, that roofing projects, HVAC projects, that's going to be just about every submission that you see that's going around, every county that's paying on submitting, that's, that's the areas that we're asking.
One thing we're doing, and Dave Ferguson knows to do this, we're prioritizing those projects. So we have to get something cut, they know what we, what we're willing to cut. And that, that may help us in, you know, if they get into a numbers crunching game like they did back in June when they were awarding those, those projects. They got into number crunching games and they were, they were cutting stuff, so. I think, I think we're going to be in good shape, that if they have to cut, we prioritize those, I think, you know, instead of getting some money.
That's part of our strategy to not ask for too much money because we kind of been through this enough times now, but sometimes if you have the day and you get down to the end and there's so much money left over that hasn't been given to some counties, school systems out there and just enough, you know, Lincoln County, you know, has asked for this, this much money or this much on the table, we can take care of their needs and give it, give the money to them, give it to someone else. That's part of our strategy, because how much we're asking. Dan, I'd like to request an executive session.
There's one thing I would like to comment on, just to update on the ESC replacement leases. We had a recent meeting the other day and of course, we have laid a very strong, Lincoln County's in favor of entering into the ESC of the counties. Our goal or preference would be for all of the counties to reach to, who knows? No one else at this time, you know, Mr. McKibb, I think, has spoken to some of the superintendents and all, they've given some indication, but no one else is formally, not formally, but has committed themselves to want to do this. Now, yesterday, we have this panel that's been out, she asked that all counties advise or submit their agreements by October the thirteenth. Now, Mr. McKibb has already submitted ours. She had prepared or listed, I read, an agreement, not advised anything, but you know, just trying to get a feel for who might be interested in doing this thing. So Jeff has already turned ours in. Once again, what we are hoping to see, obviously we have a part of ESC, now REESA seven, was it?
REESA eight.
Okay. They, they, kind of, this was kind of somewhat perfected, I think, but REESA eight, that area, they have formed a cooperative. And we're going to have, as we do this, assuming we have one, we're going to have kind of a catchy name. I've got a gentleman that works with me, very creative, and I'm going to work on it. But over in that part, that's, that's the, they call themselves Epic, Eastern Panhandle Instructional.
Kind of cooperative.
Cooperative, right. Okay, Eastern Panhandle Instructional Cooperative. Now, Jan gave us a list the other day of potential names and I mean, there was a list this long, it had some of the credit, it's, I mean, you ever saw it, Mayberry and this and that and the other. and that and the other. Um, but, you know, ESC just, I said, we've gotta come up with something other than ESC. I don't like saying that. Uh, Epic, doesn't that sound really good, Epic? And we gotta come up with something like that, Jen.
Did you say Mayberry?
Yeah, they were just, yeah. Oh, they got word.
Trees and flowers and.
Came out of the computer or something, of all this thing you have. I said, can you imagine, Mayberry Educational Cooperative or something like that? But, uh, now, see, at one time, so they were throwing around the idea of Southwestern, cause we're in the southwestern part of the state. So, uh, you know, going on that SWIC, I don't know if it's SWIC, Southwestern Instructional Cooperative. Uh, we, but anyway, we gotta hopefully look at other counties before we do. But right now, is he, what we're hoping, I know Mrs. Hamlin's goal is, right now, RESE two has AEP A to the state. Uh, and that is a big thing. Because aside from the sharing opportunities that RESE provides us, uh, RESE two does all kinds of other things. They train bus drivers, they do all kinds of things, and we just take for granted, uh, alternative TV training field. Uh, a lot of things go on there, but we've just gotten used to them doing. They aren't there anymore, aren't where these things, how they gonna be done, you know? The counties are gonna be, and that's what we try to give in our plug, you know? Have y'all thought about this? And they have, I believe. But, uh, you know, we're hoping that RESE two has AEP A. Now, I remember the first, our new potential, uh, cooperative must submit something to AEP A for next year. So you've got to exist to do that. And I, I think it has to be in before the end of that month or something, doesn't it? So, and Mrs. Hamlin has, has spoken with these people, and we're very optimistic, as she is, that our new cooperative will be able to get to AEP A. Now, if that happens, that is a major thing, because AEP A comes with it when all these , uh, services are, are purchased from whatever vendors they may be, money's come with that. And, uh, if your cooperative is fortunate enough to have that, that creates, we've talked to Officer Nero all the time, well, that's essentially what an ESC is. You've gotta be able to have some type of business things that you do that are gonna generate money. Now, Jan has said to us, or she said to me privately, if I can't bring in enough money to this cooperative, myself, through things I do, through grant seeking and, and business type opportunities, if I can't bring in enough money to operate our offices and all, then you all need to get somebody else. And, you know, you know her, you'll know how energetic she is and how much she works at this. So, and, you know, we're hopeful that, uh, you know, that there's a lot of ifs here, you know? We don't know, there's six counties in our region, we don't, you know, we think we know some counties that wanna do it, but we aren't sure. But here in a couple of weeks, we're gonna need that.
Uh, what's the total percentage that the state poured into the RESE that, you know, salaries, the, the co-op's gonna have to make it?
Well, I think it was about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that RESE two received from the state. Now, I'm not sure what the operating budget is or anything, but, uh, four hundred and sixty thousand. See, the statewide, RESE's received three million dollars, and our RESE received four hundred and sixty thousand.
So the idea that Jan had was to replace this with grant money?
Well, or Officer Nero's, or, like, for instance, AEP A. Now, I don't know all the particulars of this, but right now, if Montague County buys something to AEP A, they buy turf, for instance, for a football field, what do they pay for that? Well, uh, they, to AEP A, you get a form of a rebate, I guess you might say. Well, right now, what happens, RESE two takes care of doing all this, but they, they in turn then give one and a half percent back to Montague County, is that right, Ken? So they're giving that money back to Montague, gotta say it's kind of for their benefit to buy through the AEP A and everybody, uh, it's good for everybody. Now, one thing would have to be decided eventually, if we have our own co-op, that we don't have to develop bylaws, we've got all kinds of things that have to be done. So the first, we've gotta know who's in. Then, and at that time, once we know the counties are interested, we'll bring before you all to formally, uh, ask that we get into this contractual agreement with each other county's for the ESC. Then, each county within each, well, you now, you have a board of, or a governing board, it was a superintendent and a board member, would be just like you in RESE, and they will run this cooperative. And, uh, but one of the things that they're gonna have to do is, like, AEP A maybe is one and a half percent. Are you gonna send that back to the counties that purchase things through your, this group? Or in theory, you might keep that money to help operate your, uh, own, uh, ESC. But there's got pros and cons to doing that, cause if you wanna entice other counties to buy things through, uh, through the AEP A, then, you know, you wanna give, then some money back too. So, but all these things need to be known. I kinda see this as overlapping, you know, RESE's, they're gonna be there until June the thirtieth, and some four. Some of them are kinda already phasing out because a lot of their people are quitting, you know, they've gotta have a job. Uh, but, uh, we see, envision that our, we'd like to see our cooperative being in effect by November the first, and then that allows, uh, the, the governing board, the board directors to get with Miss Tyree, who's the legal advisor, perform bylaws and, and do all these kind of things, uh, for the beginning, uh, even sooner than next July. Obviously, there's a lot of things that have to happen, but our biggest concern now is getting started, seeing who's interested, who's gonna join, and then going from there. Uh, at our school board conference, some of the other counties were asking, you know, they're not in our RESE. Uh, what if we wanna join your ESC one of these days or something? We don't, nobody knows if this is gonna work or not work. So if they see it's a, it's a positive thing, they might say, well, you know, we'd like to join too, it's like one of these athletic conferences. And so, but I think what you'll see is, like, in our bylaws, we're gonna have some stipulation, something in there. Other counties wanna join, then our board directors are probably gonna look in our bylaws and say, you know, here's how you join. County X would like to join, yes or no? And then you vote and say, but just, uh, right now, I'm getting off the person I wanted to talk about, but just to let you know that it's coming time to decisions gonna have to be made. We're hopeful within the next month that, you know, we're gonna be able to know who's in ours, if we're gonna have one, and we can go from there. Jan may be able to sleep and fight about that. But no, if you have a job somewhere.
Okay, all right. Uh, if nothing else, then Mr. Kev has asked for a detective session, uh, a legal update and personnel action. So is there a motion to do that? Will Wilson make the motion in due morning? And Carol seconded that? Is that an all yes motion for the executive session? Personnel, legal update? All yes, okay.